Hello everyone and welcome once again to an addition of the Pikeville City Commissioners Report. I'm Shannon Deskins, bringing you another informative show with one of our city commissioners, and today it's Commissioner Barry Chaney. Nice to be with you today.
Nice to be here and be with you today, Shannon.
It's been awhile since you and I've got a chance to talk.
It has been, and I'll tell you what, we've had quite a bit happen since we have talked.
You've been a busy man. The city has just been a busy place, a hopping place to be.
Oh yeah, and especially this agenda today. It's probably been three years in the making, and I'm very excited to talk about it.
You came in with a smile on your face, so I knew it was going to be a good show.
Oh yeah.
Coming off of Labor Day weekend, we have been looking for a year, looking forward to the big Hatfield McCoy Heritage Days, and it happened. And I hear, because I was actually out of town and it broke my heart not to be able to be here, so I'm going to rely on you to give us a recap of how it went, but I'm hearing all good things.
It was very positive. Very fun weekend, very well-attended event, and we had everything going on. Started out Saturday with rain, rained their motorcycle group out, but it picked up from there. Vendors were very happy when they left, they all said they would be back. Jenny Wiley Theater, they had a special showing of their play Thursday night, and it was very well-attended. Friday night was sold out. Saturday night and Sunday night they had turned people away.
Wow.
Everybody kept talking about it, and it just kept getting bigger.
So the thirst for the story is not going away. People are still coming in, just wanting that information.
Oh yeah, and the writer that wrote this play took a particular part of this story where Johnsey Hatfield was taken prisoner by the McCoys, and Roseanne had ridden all night to Devil Ants Hatfield's house to warn him that Johnsey had been taken captive, and it was her coming to...
So they just took a small part of the story?
Oh yeah, very well done, very well done.
And sometimes that's neat to see, because in the mini-series, they only had so much time to... They hit the high points.
Yes.
So it's nice to see these productions that actually take an aspect of it, or it maybe even be a 36-hour window in the entire feud, but you know everything that happened.
Yeah, well you know, what was kind of surprising, and kind of probably added a little bit to it, the writer of the play knew nothing about the Hatfield McCoy feud.
Oh really?
And he just relied on what they sent him to read, and it was an outsider's view of what actually happened in this particular event. And it's very entertaining, very well done. The actors are all professional, did a great job.
You know, and sometimes getting that outside view, because you know, we've all heard the stories, and you'll get your local historians and your local people who tell the story, and they're very passionate about it, but it's their story, the one that they know and they believe. But when you take somebody outside and you say, "I want to give you this information, this is the factual information, you put it into a play," and sometimes that's a better way to do that.
Oh it is, and you know, there's a little bit added here and there.
Oh well, it's entertainment.
It is.
It's always that way. But the vendors, you say, seemed to be really happy?
Vendors were happy, and then things really wrapped up on Sunday. They had the car show, the Good Old Boys brought all their cars out, and we had cars from Tennessee, West Virginia, Virginia, Indiana.
Do you think it was a farther draw than your Normal Muscle-on-Maine? I mean, was it... Did you see new cars that you don't normally see?
We did see new cars. Like I said, those out-of-state cars, some of those we hadn't seen before. And you know, there was an excitement about it, that the cars were very high-quality. Brett Wagner, who was there from pastime on Speed Channel...
Oh yeah, okay.
He went around looking at the cars, and he was very impressed with what the quality of the cars that we had, and he said they could show anywhere, a lot of those cars could. Especially the truck that won the Best of Show, which was the first time a truck had won the Best of Show, was a '30 something...
Oh wow.
Plymouth, or a Dodge that a man named Rodney Johnson from B-Fight had rebuilt. It'd taken a couple of years to do it.
That's not an easy or a quick thing to do.
Oh no, and then we had another local boy here that was in stiff competition for that. He had an all-original '68 GT500 Shelby Mustang.
Wow.
I mean, that is an unbelievable car. I would be afraid to try to price that.
You sound like a car guy.
Well, I love...
I mean, you're spitting those out like you just knew exactly what that was.
Well, when I was young then, Shannon, I always wanted one, never could afford one, and I still can't afford one, so I...
Not one of those like that? It seems like they're more expensive now than they were when they were brand-new.
I think that he told me that he'd been offered $200,000 for that car and turned it down. So that's way out of my price range.
I think that's way out of most people's price range, but I guess that's nice for him to know that he has something that's his baby, and that's the way it is for a lot of these cars. I mean, your Good Old Boys Car Club and the other people bring their vehicles in, I mean, these are like they're children.
Yeah.
And if you watch how they set them up, I mean, a lot of times they'll have the mirrors underneath them, I mean, they're spotless inside and out. So that's really neat to see.
And a lot of them, you know, work on them themselves and refinish them themselves, and it becomes a part of them, a lot of them.
Now, you had something new to what your normal car show is during that, and you had the drag races in the Riverfield.
We had the drag races in the Riverfield. Kent Rose and Arm Drop Nation came to... He calls that the Riverfield Arena.
Well, you can... I see why, because you've got the bank there that people can sit on, like the Coliseum or the arena.
Oh, and they were. They were all over the place. You know, some people said we had probably 6,000 people.
Heard several thousand.
Packed up around there, and I'll tell you, he just... Al or Kent and Brett, they just interacted with the crowd, interacted with the drivers. It was a very entertaining thing. You could see Camaros racing Mustangs.
I guess everybody would kind of in their mind pick their favorite before it... And this is, I think it's what, $20 maybe for anyone to come in, bring their vehicle and race?
Right.
So it wasn't like you guys brought these professional vehicles in?
Oh no.
Anybody could have raced.
Yeah, anybody... I just had to show proof of insurance and driver's license, and you were in the race. And you know, a diesel truck actually came in second. You know, that really surprised everybody, and I'm telling you, it was something. That guy said he had 1,000 horsepower in that truck, I don't know.
Wow. And it was still street legal, I guess?
Yeah.
Well, I guess, well, how are we to know? And we're not going to question it.
Yeah, that is true.
But that's a lot of horsepower.
It is.
But yeah, next time that comes back around, I'm sure that everybody's going to want to see that again.
Well, it is going to be coming. I'll get to that in just a second. But you know, and then on Monday, we had the parade, but we also had the tough cuss rush...
That's tough...
Yeah, that's a tongue twister.
I've seen pictures from that. I've got friends that ran it.
Yeah.
That was an awesome thing to see.
I didn't run it. I didn't run in that, but it was very well-attended. 164 runners entered that.
That's a popular trend now. It's... You still have your 5K races and things like that, but it's these... Your Tough Mudder is another one that they do. So hopefully this one in Pikeville, I think, I've talked to the guys, they're going to start trying to do that every year.
Yeah.
And I guarantee that these endurance races with the mud and the ropes and the things you have to jump, they're getting very popular.
Yeah.
So it's awesome that Pikeville got in on that right when it's the big thing.
Oh yeah, and I may try to get in shape and run in that myself next year.
I think I'm going to try it too. You and I can partner up, and who cares if we bring up the rear. And they say it's not about how fast you finish, it's about finishing.
Well, you know, I don't want to finish last, Shannon, I'd like to be up there.
You can knock me to the side, and then you can walk ahead of me.
Okay, well...
But all that being said, in a nutshell, Hatfield McCoy Heritage Days 2013 was a great success.
It was, it was, and you know, I had so many compliments about it, and I've heard so much about how much people enjoyed it, and especially the arm-drop drag races. And that's coming back this weekend, in fact. This Muscle-on-Maine weekend, they're going to have the block party with the Good Old Boys cruising in at the Giovanni's Pizza up beside Landmark Inn, and they'll have music there. And then Saturday, they'll be cruising in downtown and setting their cars up, and then at 5:00, they're going to do a few burnouts, I think, and then...
More drag racing.
More drag racing. Like I said, Kent Rose and Arm Drop Nation are coming back, and he's a character.
He's a character?
And everybody really seems to enjoy him, and his wife Sabrina calls it vengeance in the valley. So if you got beat last time and you want vengeance...
Issue a challenge.
Come on back up.
Okay. And hopefully, maybe when everything starts again next year, because we're kind of wrapping up the season now for those type of things. Are we going to do it again in October?
We're doing it again in October, second week in October. The block party will be at Jerry's Restaurant that night, and we're going to race again that night.
So if you miss the arm-drop drag races that are coming up really soon, and by the time you're seeing this, it may already be over with, but in October, they're going to do it again, so make sure that you watch and listen to your local radio and newspapers, because I guarantee you that it'll be advertised.
Oh yeah, and Jeff Coleman of City Tire, he always does the burnouts for us, and he's been with it. And you know, I tell people, he saved my life, because when I was down there, we were just getting started in that, I was down there and trying to hold a motorcycle back so it could burn out, and I went up and saw him the next day, and he said, "I'm going to take this over for you to save your life," he said. Said, "You're going to get run over."
Gladly, yeah, let him have it then.
Yeah, I did, sorry. That was good.
Well, good. And that's sort of like a recap of something that just happened, but let's kind of switch gears just a minute and look forward to a lot of things that are happening now in the city and getting ready to happen. One of those, I guess, goes into both those categories, is the whole commercial air service that's recently been announced coming to Pikeville. It's been a scary, probably 12 to 18 months of funding issues and support issues and things like that, but you guys just made the announcement that it's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, I'll tell you, this has been a history with this. You know what, well actually, you know, if you go back to 1964, the Appalachian Regional Commission, when they did their study, they identified isolation as a reason Appalachian counties had not enjoyed in the prosperity of the rest of the nation. So isolation creates poverty. So the more that we open our area up, the better for the people that live here. You know, even over the years, I can remember, I think Donovan had a Courier-Journal article from maybe '68, '69, that identified the need for commercial air service. In the '80s, there was talk of commercial air service, even the '90s. 2008, there was an attempt to get commercial air service, and in that, we were in a supportive role. We did everything that was asked of us, and we... Well, that's the reason we annexed the airport, was to provide emergency services in case we did get it, because a commercial flight has to have emergency services onsite, present 30 minutes before the flight, 30 minutes after. So that's why we annexed that airport then. And in 2010, you know, we were ready and very comfortable, and would have been very happy to have stayed in a supportive role, to write letters of support and be a cheerleader, you know, try to get people to support it, but you know...
Circumstances changed a little bit.
They did. Circumstances changed, and we were asked to step up and be the government entity to apply for the commercial air service grant and be a partner in this to get it done. Then you had the Pike County Chamber of Commerce that during all this became the East Kentucky Chamber of Commerce. They expanded to, I think, 364 businesses to support and...
I think it's eight counties that the regional chamber serves?
Oh yeah.
And every one of those are going to benefit?
Oh, well, that's one of the reasons they were able to get 200 letters of support that they were able to present, that went along with the application for the community air service grant. And I can't say enough about a young man named Jared Arnett.
He's a hustler.
Oh, he is a hustler, but you know, Shannon, not only that, you know, he's a free-will Baptist preacher.
I've heard that.
He is, he's a very accomplished preacher, and preaches quite a bit. He's popular in Floyd County and Pike County, so you know, he's a very, very good young man. I'll tell you, a very knowledgeable young man, and a U-Pike graduate, so...
Everything that we're looking to have here, you know, a local graduate and very educated guy, and smart and easy to get along with, and very motivated.
Oh yeah, and another guy that I want to particularly recognize is Bill Hickman. And the thing about Bill Hickman, when we were looking at him and thinking about putting him on the airport board, I went to his former boss and I asked her, I said, "What about Bill?" And she looked at me, she said, "Barry, I'll tell you, he's the best corporate lawyer this side of Lexington." And I said, "Wow." She said, "Yes, he is, and I'll tell you something else, I'll put him up against anybody in the state."
That's saying a lot.
That is saying a lot, especially this lady.
I know who you're talking about, and yes, it is.
Yeah, and another gentleman that I have a lot of confidence in, I asked him about him, I worked with Bill, and he said, "Bill will not lie to you, that he'll tell you the truth. He'll not only tell you the truth, but he'll tell you the way things are. He won't tell you what you want to hear, but he'll tell you the way things are."
What you need to hear.
Right. And he was very high on him, so you know, I was all for it. That was my recommendation, Bill Hickman. And you know, we didn't appoint him to be chairman, that was something that the Pikeville Pike County board members did. So they elected him their chairman, so they recognized that. And you know, actually, that board, you look at Bill Hickman, Lyle Blackburn, who's an investment guru, Dr. Satchdiva, who's a very well-educated man, a community service-minded man. Probably the only person I know more community service-minded than him would be his wife, who...
Both of the Dr. Satchdivas are.
They are wonderful people.
I know them both.
Yeah, and Jack Sykes, who's probably been in just probably almost every project in Pikeville and Pike County for the past 25 years. Greg Johnson, very accomplished businessman, very intelligent man. And Mr. Wagner, he's a businessman from Phelps, and I don't know too much about him, he's new on the board, but that's a board that I would probably trust with anything. Very, very knowledgeable, experienced group.
And they've worked just as hard as you guys to...
They did.
You know, there's so many different people who have worked to bring this into the region. And you know, you hear stories, in the past few years, when the commercial air thing has come back around and really this push has happened, you hear so many people saying, "We've tried to bring new business into the region," and they like the sights. They like the land, a lot of the mountaintop removals. We've created so much flat land and usable land through that. And you get so far in a conversation with one of these businesses until the topic of commercial air and airport comes in, and they just, they don't want anything to do with it after that. So do you see this as a just... I mean, other than providing the service to our residents, a lot of it is a business draw now that will open a door that was previously closed.
That is part of it, Shannon, and you know, going back to where we were thrown into this role, you know, what made this even more of an emergency and more of something that had to be done was the FAA had been shortening other runways. They shortened the Boyd County Airport. And you know, for us to keep the length of our field, that would still let most of the jets, or all the jets that land there now still land, so a bunch of those wouldn't have been able to land, they shortened that. So commercial air service fends that off, and you know, they won't shorten it now because we're going to have commercial air service. But that made that equally important, because you know, a lot of businesses may have pulled out if they couldn't land their jets here. And you know, that was a concern for us. Kind of had us panicked a little bit. But that will be something that will be a draw for us and something that we can use. And I'll tell you something else that we can use, Shannon, and not too many... You know, we haven't talked about this too much, but you know, the coal industry, the downturn in the coal industry has left us with a lot of land that has rail access, that has three-phase power. It has left us with a workforce. You know, people look at miners and you think of a pick and a shovel, but those guys work with high-voltage electricity. Those guys work, that mining equipment is sophisticated machinery, you know, and they are...
They're very highly educated and highly skilled.
Yes, highly skilled, and hard workers.
Yeah.
You know, I think we had Toyota actually advertised for miners to come and apply.
Well, they know the work ethic that these guys, men and women. I mean, there are women also in the mining industry, but hard-working people.
Yeah, and you know, there's a skill there, and something that we're also forgetting, Shannon, is that we have cow logs in our market. We have cow logs in our market. How many towns and cities and counties around this country would love to be able to say, "We've got cow logs here." They provide 400 jobs, they provide middle-income jobs, they provide health benefits, tremendous job. You know, who... You know, I don't understand why we've not used them, you know?
It's true.
You know, not to take advantage of them, but...
I know what you're saying.
Cow logs here, you know, they not only make the strawberry Pop-Tarts, but when there is a specialty flavor of a certain time of year, they also make that.
And I think they may be the only factory that makes the frosted Pop-Tarts.
They are, they are.
So if anywhere, if you're having a frosted Pop-Tart, you know it was made right here in Pike County.
Yeah, and when they make the Pop-Tarts to go to Europe, this is where they make them.
That's awesome.
Yes, it is, and you know...
One more point I want to make before we get off the commercial air thing is, you know, we talked about attracting businesses, but for those of us who do fly, you know, sometimes you think, oh, you're going to go to a small airport and you're going to get on a plane, you're going to give them your bag, and then whenever you land, you have to get your... At a larger airport or a hub, you'll get your bags back and have to recheck them. But that's not the case in Pikeville, and that's one of the most attractive things that I've found, is you go in, you will go into the Pikeville Airport, just like any other airport, you'll check your bag one time.
Right.
And until you reach your final destination, you won't see that bag again.
Right.
And that's been something that I think hasn't been said a lot. It's those little conveniences that make it worth doing.
Well, you know, another convenience is you can get on Travelocity. Travelocity, I hope I said that right.
Travelocity.
Right, and you can get your ticket there. And like you said, when you buy that ticket, you don't have to go land someplace else, go buy another ticket, it has all your collective...
It's a through ticket all the way...
Right, all the way through.
Nashville? Pikeville to Nashville, correct?
Pikeville to Nashville, and then from there, you can go anywhere in the world.
That's a huge airport, so...
Yes, it is. And it is the lowest-priced airport in the nation, by the way. Southwest, West Airlines flies out of there, and so it's a cost-cutting move as well. And from what I understand, Luke Schmidt, which I forgot to mention him when I go in...
Very instrumental in getting this whole project going.
Yeah, and Donovan Blackburn, don't want to forget him, but...
You know, you talk about Luke Schmidt and Donovan and all kinds of other people that have been so instrumental, I guess we can't name them all.
No.
But it's just been a huge project, it's been so many years in the making, and we are coming down to the time that we're going to do a ribbon cutting.
We are, we're going to do a ribbon cutting. The plane will be there. It's... All the planes are going to be brand-new, all leather interior bathroom.
19 seats, 19 passengers.
19 passengers, and just a top-of-the-line plane, a short takeoff and landing plane, and climbs faster than a jet, and so it's a beautiful aircraft. Hal Rogers is going to be there, you'll be able to get on there and see the aircraft yourself. And I hope Luke Schmidt gets to come.
Yes.
I would enjoy seeing him again.
I've heard him speak about this project several times, and he's very knowledgeable, so...
But before I forget it, you know, he said that this project, this commercial air project, will probably wind up being something that will be... The other cities will pattern their services after, because it is something that's not been done before. And it seems like we've been having a lot of that here in Pikeville, but this is...
Not a bad thing to say.
Oh no, it's something that's not been done before. The way it's laid out, going to Nashville, and the connections and the way you do that, and the... Our industry is very high on it, from what I understand.
So once again, that's October the 17th is the ribbon cutting for the new airport, so the Pikeville Pike County Airport. Come out and see that ribbon cutting, you can view the plane, get a good look at it, and as Barry said, they're all brand-new planes, so...
Oh yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm sure you and I, next time we meet, we'll talk about what happened on that day. But we're down to just the last few minutes, and I think there were a couple of other things you wanted to touch on, one being, real quickly, Pikeville Commons. We are almost ready for a groundbreaking there.
Hallelujah.
It's been a little stressful, but it's going to be so good when it's finished.
Well, you know, this, I think this has taught everybody patience and you know...
But I think, from what I've seen and what I've heard, it's worth waiting for.
It is, it is very much worth waiting for. We're going to be signing contracts next week, and everything will be go from there. We're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony September the 23rd, and...
11:00 AM, I think.
11:00 AM, and come down, and you know, we're going to be celebrating, Shannon, because this has been tough on us.
There's been so many little hurdles, from you know, having to move the fire station to having to move the post office and construct a new post office, just to some little things, but I think it's all been worth it. And you know, I've seen the drawings, and I've heard, and we've talked to Donovan, we've talked to you, and Jimmy Carter also, another commissioner about it.
Oh yeah.
And we're excited to have all of that coming to Pikeville.
It's going to be fantastic, and the concept of putting the 200 apartments in there, and you know, that's going to be a little town of itself.
Community within itself.
Yeah, and you wait and see, a lot of people are going to want to move in there.
They're already taking names for the apartments.
They are, I've been asked...
There may be a waiting list. I've heard rumors of a waiting list.
I don't know, but I was asked several months ago if I could help a couple get an apartment down there, and I gave them the Mrs. Blackburn's number, I said, "Me and Mrs. Blackburn's number at AAA Realty." But yeah, there's quite a bit of interest in those apartments, and the reason they were wanting is because of the convenience of...
You're not going to have to drive to a lot of your stores and things in that entire area. It's very community, I mean, very family-friendly.
Yeah.
You can walk, you can exercise, ride your bike, so...
Oh yeah.
We'll be talking about that also as we go forward. But one thing I know, we talked about before we got started, was Pikeville Station 3.
Yeah, that's...
If you're getting ready to start construction on the new fire department, right off of the boulevard, between the boulevard and the... Where you go up to like Bob Anis Park.
Right, and we voted on a five-year, million-dollar construction loan. We'll be signing papers on that and constructing the fire station there. And so that'll be done very soon, and...
And as soon as Station 3 is ready, and then you're going to start construction of a new post office, and all that kind of stuff's going to start real soon.
Well, the Station 3 and all that, we have to evacuate the day of signing.
Right.
The day of signing, so we'll have to tarp some of those trucks and just keep them ready, but...
But all that's going to happen fast.
It is, it is. And another little project that I don't want to forget is Jenny Wiley Theater. Foundation's live in Port, going to see steel there in three weeks, coming along very well.
What, you're still looking at March 2014?
March 2014.
So just yet another reason to bring people from outside the area to Pikeville.
People to be able to fly right into Pikeville and go to the theater.
And then in the last minute or two that we've got left, I know the city has three new police cars. One passed me the other day, and I thought, "Who is that?" And it was ours.
Yeah, well, same. We've got three new ones, we're going to order three new ones, and they'll come, so they'll have the same color scheme. And before I forget it, I want to recognize Joe Sloan, Officer Sloan.
He did arrest.
He did. He had some... We had a guy that broke into some vehicles during Hatfield McCoy days and stole some private, or stole iPads and such. And Joe went to extra mile and saw this guy, and you know, he's just followed his gut feeling and went to extra mile.
He got the merchandise back?
Got all the merchandise back, and they told the story at the commission meeting about being able to give iPads back to those, some children.
It doesn't happen very often.
No, it doesn't. And you know, I'm going to warn people, you know, whenever you come and you leave your car, don't leave your valuables in plain sight, because if a crime starts when you've got a targeted opportunity, motivated offender, and a lack, or absence of a capable guardian. So if you don't leave that targeted opportunity out, chances are, they won't break in your car.
That was a good tip to give as we wrap up this show. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Shannon.
I think we could have gone probably another half hour, but next time we're around, we'll make notes and we'll hit this stuff again.
Well, maybe we'll talk to the guys here, and maybe we can get another half hour.
There you go. But until then, I think we're going to wrap up now, but thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Shannon.
And thank you for joining us for another edition of the Pikeville City Commissioners Report. I'm Shannon Deskins for Pike TV.